And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Local call.
Director Boer asks and all of the members present.
Approval of the minutes?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Like to make up the board meeting minutes. Adoption of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of financial reports, is this new? Is this all consensus? Excuse it, our fumbling here, we are going through a new system of procedures on each of the items, and just want to make sure that we're covering it in the correct way. Okay, so we've got the statement of cash transactions, 4.1. Approval of those payments? A motion to approve the payments of the vouchers for the statement of cash transactions in the general fund?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Make a motion to accept the student activity account for the month ending September 30th, 2018, and October 31st, 2018, subject to audit.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Make a motion to approve the district's depositories, custodial institutions, investment advisors, financial advisors, paying agents, and account signers.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Go down to the special presentations. The high school student of the month for November is Justin Curran and Monti Ola Afawale. Excuse me if I mispronounced that. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. I do not see our student representing. Ocean Becker. Welcome.
All right. First off, our Quiz Bowl has won all three of their matches so far this season. In the middle school, students are preparing to qualify for the spelling bee. They'll know by this Friday if they're in or not, and the bee itself will be held on November 30th. In the high school, the humanities department organized a day-long recognition for the veterans and active military service members of our community. Almost forty individuals were honored by students in an assembly that also featured a keynote speaker and the NL band providing patriotic music. Additionally, students throughout the day in the social studies classrooms had multiple opportunities to interact with service members and veterans, enhancing their appreciation for those who serve our country. This was an engaging and profitable day for all involved. The artwork that is still displayed behind you was the result of many art students and their efforts. The NL field hockey team qualified for the District III tournament for the first time in eleven years. Northern Lebanon earned the Lancaster Lebanon League Team Academic Award for the 2018 season. Northern Lebanon earned the All-State Team Academic Award for the 2018 season. Four players were First Team Section All-Stars, two players were Second Team, and one was honorable mention. Eight players were League Academic Award winners, and ten players were State Academic Award winners. In the IU department, the middle school life skills, high school life skills, and high school emotional support classes participate in the IU-sponsored bazaars. The middle school class makes gifts, treats, accessories, and gifts for pets and pet lovers. The high school life skills class makes primitive decor and gifts. The high school emotional support class makes paracord bracelets and keychains. I gave a copy of a flyer for one of the bazaars to Mrs. Martin, and they would love to see some support from the NL community. The service project for the homeless, both locally and in the annual trip to New York City, is moving forward, but the winter coat component is behind pace of it. If any board members or community members know of any local establishments who are phasing out their employee winter coats, they could let Mr. Dan Hess know. On December 1st, the middle school and high school cross-country teams will be volunteering with the Salvation Army's Red Cattle Campaign from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They will be located at Bee Gees Market in Jonestown. In student council news, Class 4 will be the week of December 17th through December 20th, and student council is looking at a pep rally, a Mario Kart tournament, lunch games, penny wars, spirit days, hall decorating, and a coat drive, as well as other activities throughout the week. The student council has started preparing our second annual King of Hearts dance. This dance will be held in February, and it will have an all-guys court. Unlike a regular court, the winner will be determined by the amount of money raised for the American Heart Association. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that detailed report. Next are the actors from Meet Me in St. Louis.
They take direction well, but they don't do much about direction. There's a reason I'm not on stage, by the way, because this is like my least favorite thing to do, but we are here, this is not a musical. I know everybody knows the musical Meet Me in St. Louis, but this is the play version. So we can't sing any songs for you because there are no songs to sing, but the kids did want to introduce their characters to you. They've been working very hard, and as you can see, they've been transformed to 1904. And so we thought we'd bring them here tonight just to give you a little taste of our show, which is this Friday and Saturday at 7 o'clock P.M.
I guess I'm first. Okay. My name is Abby Kessler. I play Mrs. Smith. I'm a devoted mother to five wonderful children, and I'm also a very supportive wife of Mr. Smith.
My name is Tegan Girati. I play Lucille Pentard, an eastern girl who likes causing trouble in relationships.
My name is Kyle Wall. I play Ronald Smith, Sr., a dad of five who has a great sense of fashion.
I'm Harrison Lurch. I play grandpa. My daughter would be Mrs. Smith, so that's how I fall into play. I teach all my grandchildren that I'm a king, to use life lessons.
My name is Michael Bieschi. I play John Shepherd, which is Rose's on-and-on boyfriend, who always tends to come in the house at the wrong time.
Hi, my name is Aswan Sekandari. I also play the same character, John Shepherd.
Hello. My name is Jessica. I play Lucille also, like Tegan, and I tend to cause trouble in relationships. I still am everyone's man, and yeah, that's it.
Hi, I'm Maddie. I play Tutti. I'm the six-year-old, I don't want to move it. I play the six-year-old daughter who's very cynical. She says a lot of things that she shouldn't say as a six-year-old, so yeah, I'm the funny part of it.
My name is Joshua Charles Lyon. I play Mr. Dodge, that is Mr. Smith's boss, and he is trying to look out for his company and do the right thing, I think.
Hello, I'm Fred Hickok, and I play Mr. Duffy. I'm his yes-man, and I hate Mr. Smith with a passion.
I'm Haley Cook, and I play Katie. She's the hired help for the Smiths, and I'm very loving of the children. I like, I'm like kind of like your second moms, so.
These are the only children that came with us tonight. We bribed them with pizza, but they're also very excited about the voting tonight on the school musical, so I think they're sticking around to see what the vote is, so just to let you know, no pressure, but they're very excited. So please come see our show.
Was that 5:00 p.m. Friday, Saturday?
Seven. Seven, yep. You come at 5:00, you get really besieged.
We now have the public input session. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're over it, of course, Mike.
All right, I'll go with that one. Every now and again, I tend to get long-winded, so I'm intentionally going to try to keep this presentation as brief as I can. I was asked to come and speak to the board tonight, and I appreciate that opportunity, by the way, regarding our Alice and our intruder drills and training. I know I did pass some handouts to the board. They're welcome to follow along. I'm going to begin with Act 44, which is that new legis, there it is. Sorry, I was probably loud. Legislation that was just recently passed by the Commonwealth. The legislation is a work in progress. It's not perfect, and we're finding little mistakes and some problematic pieces here and there as we go. I'm certain they're all going to be addressed. I'm going to skip right to page three. It'll be paragraph six, Training, because that's what will be pertinent to the Alice drills. Act 44 requires training for all employees of schools, and definitions is one of the areas we're having a little bit of problem with, between professional employees, subcontractors, we're not sure if they're included or not, and if they were, how would you compel them to train? I'm sure that will be hammered up, rather, by the legislature in due time. It also requires three hours of training every five years on topics that must include situational awareness, trauma-informed education awareness, behavioral health awareness, suicide and bullying awareness, substance use awareness, and the drills must include fire, natural disaster, active shooter, hostage, and bomb threats. Now, that little part is important because that kind of played into the drill that we did last month. I'm going to jump up a couple pages. Before we did our intruder drills this year, we sent letters home to parents, guardians, and families informing them that we will be conducting the drill. That was something that was always debated in the past as well. Should a letter go home before, should a letter go home after? And Act 44 kind of legislated that the letters to the parents go home prior to conducting the drill. So we were actually kind of happy to have that question answered for us. And the letter, and I'm hoping that everybody got one. They went home in book bags and via email and other resources that the district has to push information out. And it's dated October the 4th. It says, Dear Parent or Guardian, recently, the Pennsylvania State Legislature passed Act 44, 2018, which addresses school safety. The act requires security drills be conducted during the school year. Further, the act requires, prior to conducting drills, that both school staff and students be instructed on the methods they may use to respond to certain types of incidents. These methods may include the Alice principles or similar. You may learn more about Alice at AliceTraining.com. Over the next few weeks, school staff will take some time to discuss with students how to best respond to various emergency situations. And it goes on to say that together, we should endeavor to create a positive and safe school environment. We're committed to doing whatever is necessary to help your child learn potential lifesaving skills that not only may work in school, but would almost certainly apply to similar circumstances outside of school. Now, I'm not certain if the district had adopted specifically the Alice principles or not. I arrived in October of 2016, and it was February or March of 2017 that I attended the Alice Training Institute. I was certified as an Alice instructor. So at that moment, that's when the district, or at least I kind of informally adopted the Alice principles. The difference between Alice and lockdown and the run-hide fight was kind of falls in between are pretty significant. And what Alice does is it provides students and staff options, meaning we're not, or they are not required to immediately go into a lockdown. And there's a lot of scientific data to back the reasons up for doing that, and I think the most significant is Columbine, where the vast majority of those that were killed or wounded, were wounded or killed in the library with an exit that was not more than 30 or 40 feet away, but they didn't use it because they went into lockdown. So that kind of spurred this whole transformation into a system like Alice that provides us with options. Now, I had mentioned earlier that Act 44 kind of requires that the drills include certain things, natural disasters, hostage situations, and bombs. I'm not sure why the legislature chose to do that, but this year, we included a hostage situation in our drill, and if you flip the page over, you'll see where I provided you guys with the scripts that we used to conduct our drills this year. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but that should give you a step-by-step of how they were conducted. Now, prior to actually conducting the drills, it was August of 2017 is when I presented the Alice, or most of the Alice training to the faculty and staff. It was end-service day at the very end of August, first day of school for teachers, I suppose. And subsequent to that, I created several PowerPoint presentations. That way, we were able to push them out to staff. We also had shorter and smaller versions of the Alice presentation that we were able to push out to students, and that was to act as a refresher before we conducted the drills. And before we did the drills this year, we also pushed those out a second time. So every time we do a drill, we try to push out the PowerPoints with sufficient time for everybody to at least refresh themselves. At the conclusion of this year's drills, Dr. Benzel had sent correspondents home to parents and guardians advising them that the drills were conducted, and that if they wished to, they could take a few minutes to discuss intruders and the planning and the process with their children. Now, I don't know if the board has any specific concerns that you would like me to address, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you explain, when you say drill, I think that this is where I was a little bit confused, trying to talk to some kids. It's not an actual, like, physical drill as much as it is an activity. Is that the...
At this point, that is where we are at. The National School Resource Officers Association and the National Association of School Psychiatrists, or longer psychologists, rather, along with Sound and Safe Schools, which is a nonprofit organization that was founded shortly after Sandy Hook, actually provides for a process that we should endeavor to follow. It provides best practices for incrementally increasing our drills from simple instruction right up through actual drills that would include some sort of sight and sound, so we are following that process.
When, I mean, last year, you did the instruction. There wasn't a physical drill last year, correct?
No, we did drills last year.
Did physical lockdown?
Yes.
Kids did the drills?
Yes.
Okay. In elementary schools as well?
Yes.
So you start, and then I think Mr. Reese had said you will do the active drills in the spring here? Is that it?
Well, we, I'm not sure which.
Sorry.
Yeah, I would have to, if you said something, I would have to defer. A more complete?
Yes.
Yeah. As we follow this hierarchy that's prescribed by those organizations I just discussed, certainly, the nature of the drills and the intensity of the drills will increase. Given where the school, the students, and the staff are at right now, and we felt it was probably better to start on the lower end of the pyramid and build our way up. And not having been here prior to the 1617 school year, I'm not really sure exactly what we did, so we're following those leading practices and working our way up to something a little bit more aggressive. Does that answer?
Yeah, that does. I know, have you found a way to maybe get student feedback directly? Like, kind of, I know that we have a lot of different apps and emails and ways that students can give feedback. I know last year, students had brought a petition to the board. I don't know if anybody remembers that, wanting a drill, wanting a physical safety drill run, and I think that they had a, you know, a pretty loud voice in that. I think maybe being able to hear directly from the students and what they fear in day-to-day in some of the classrooms. I know some of the classrooms are a little bit scarier than others because there aren't exits. There aren't, either's one door, which would probably be a lockdown situation. But I just think listening to the students would be very effective. Some of the younger ones were confused that maybe in the event of an intruder, there would actually be somebody telling them throughout the entire process where that person is. And I don't think that that's something that would likely happen, to be able to say, this person's in this hallway, and this person's in this hallway. So I think maybe just listening to the kids might help a little bit as well.
Sure. Were you referring to elementary-age kids?
No, I think it was, one was a middle school student had just kind of said they ran through drills as if the person would be in this part of the building, or if this person was in this part of the building, what they would do.
Yeah, and what we did was we actually moved the intruder. Last year, the intruder was stationary in one part of the building. This year, we actually had the intruder move, so there was a second announcement where the second location was, giving the students the opportunity. And this was more of a brain exercise. And the point that we want to get across to everybody is the fact that they have options. We want to avoid that lockdown mentality, and we want them to actually exercise their brains a little bit and think about other options that may be available, more specifically, fleeing the building. And as far as the elementary-age children are concerned, we're kind of happy to say that we just received some books that we had purchased through the Alice Institute that are actually designed toward explaining this and comforting kids in that K through five, probably more K through four level. But we do have a book, a workbook, for each classroom and maybe half a dozen extras. As soon as we can get them stamped, we'll push them out to the schools. So that should really be a very useful aid for teachers in helping the kids. And as we progress and we get more comfortable with the intruder drills and the Alice principles, we will incrementally increase.
I just think that that's the most important. I know I was in schools when, I was in school as one of the younger ones up here when a lot of the intruder drills were happening and the lockdown. And I think something that we found the most important coming from our teachers and our admin was to find the calm in the chaos, although some schools do have lockdown, some schools didn't always have a lockdown. And I think that's the part that a lot of the kids miss through some of these processes, is that it's all very calm, discussed. If the person is here, what will you do?
And that's by design.
If you hear, yeah, if you hear, but you have no idea where they are in the building, but you can hear it, so you think it's in this direction, you think it's in that direction, it's not going to be as clear and as focused, and I think that that's just, I'm not saying this doesn't, I'm just saying that's something I think to really express to the teachers in those drills, to find the calm in that chaos.
As we're afforded opportunity to train teachers, whether it be in-service days or whatnot, again, we will increase. And the whole idea of doing it the way we are now is very deliberate, and it's just very much an introduction and to get people acquainted and to kind of get the juices flowing so they start thinking. And as far as student feedback, I have nothing formal in place, but I will certainly consider that.
I'd like to just throw this out there for board members, but for the whole community. I've used this particular series with second graders, and it is awesome. I mean, it is written with them in mind as far as, "I'm not scared, I'm prepared," that's the theme. Sheep, Shepherd, Wolf, it brings it down to their level, doesn't make it as scary, but just lets them know that if we do all these different drills, we do all the different things, that they'll be prepared for whatever happens. And it is truly an excellent piece of literature.
I was very happy that we're able to purchase those, and that K to five level is exceptional. It is, it's, you have to be very careful because all of this is very much age and ability appropriate. So I agree. I think the book is going to be a tremendous resource, and as we continue to progress, it'll be like fire drills. We'll get to a point where it'll be second nature, and that would be the hope.
That was going to be my question, was whether we had that book, so.
And we do. As soon as I get them pushed out, we will.
With the Act 44, I, do we, have we made a plan how we're utilizing the grant money for the $25,000? Has that been decided? And did we apply for the additional funds?
We did. When we applied for the $25,000, and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency is the organization that accepted all of these grant applications, and their system is very different than the E-grant system that we currently use and almost everybody else does and we're familiar with. So there's been a lot of hiccups along the way, and there's been a lot of, a lot of questions back and forth, and not just our school district, 496 of them had stuff get kicked back. But to answer your question, we did apply for some specific things in that $25,000 because they required it, and we did apply for additional monies. I think the total is somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 that we applied for.
But what were the items? Because I know you had to prioritize them.
We did. Everything that we asked for had to be based off the security assessments that we had conducted. Excuse me. So lighting, outdoor lighting, moving or switching a lot of the gas stuff that we have over to LEDs. We have a lot of parking lots and areas around the building that have no lighting at all. We also requested some upgrades to our security camera system, including installation at the elementary centers that currently don't have anything. We asked for a visitor management system. If you're familiar, those that work in other districts may have Raptor or i Lobby. We, people come in, swipe their driver's license, it runs a database for sex offenders and whatnot, print the sticker, put it on, sticker expires, it has your picture on it. It's a great system. Plus, you can access it mobilely, so if we have some sort of issue in the building and we need to know where visitors are or who was in the building, and we have remote access, so that's a great tool as well. Our all-hazards plan, we asked for some money to redo that. That's going to take a significant amount of man-hours.
Last question, since you said about the security assessment. I know that was done previously to Act 44, so is there thought put into what we will do for the climate component of the assessment?
There's been a lot of thought and a lot of energy and effort into the climate component, and right now, we're continuing our work at the National School Climate Center. And part of the contract we had with them, in addition to the educational session they did in the cafeteria a few weeks ago, we also maintain constant contact, and we have video conferences with them on a regular basis as we try to move forward, figure out exactly what it is that we need. And if I had the answer to that question, I'd be delighted, but I don't. So I'm actually very happy to be working with these folks. And I think the IU just contracted with them as well on a pilot program that we're going to be involved with. So we are moving forward as fast as we can. So we are moving forward as fast as we can on that issue, but it's very complex.
Thanks.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Our next special report will be Nate Urban, Treasures Report.
The only, I'm sorry, my voice is awful, but the only thing I'll discuss here is the cash disbursements for October. These kids are probably thinking, "Man, this guy sounds weird." But the cash disbursements are a little higher than normal this month, and that's because of a high cost in healthcare for the month of October. The previous months, the healthcare costs weren't as high, so that is the reason for that. After public talk here, I'll discuss a second thing, but that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Urban. And next is our public input session. I have one item, one person for commenting on an agenda item. Everyone else, including the person that we'll be talking, has, would like to talk on a non-agenda item. So Lisa McCoy on Alice Training and Safety.
My name is Lisa McCoy, reside at 445 South Lancaster Street in Lebanon. A mother of five children here in the district. I wanted to talk, first I wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Bonberger for helping to keep the music and the theater and stuff completely alive, because I don't know how many people realize this, but losing Mrs. Masser was a very big hole. And having Mrs. Bonberger fill that hole is fabulous. And my children, while I am nowhere near musically inclined or act or do anything of that nature, my children do, and so I do appreciate all the work that she does and all the work that those students do on top of all their academics. So I did want to say thank you publicly to her for stepping into that role. As far as Alice, I have a couple of questions. Some of them were answered when Mr. Cobal was up here and the board was talking to them. But the piece that really wasn't answered was special education students. What are we doing to ensure that they're getting what it is that they need? Like, I know that they all have individual IEPs. I know that we have specialized things for them. However, what are we doing for them? Are we looking at whatever that book is? I would really like to know what that is, because I feel it would be a great resource for me to help my children. Are we putting that into the middle school and the high school IEP rooms? Because some of those kids may be, excuse me, may be on that kind of grade level, and maybe it would help them understand what was going on. I think as parents, if you don't teach in a special education or you don't help with special education students, or you don't live special education, we kind of get complacent, and we don't think about those students who really don't comprehend and understand what's going on in those types of things. And while I understand what Mr. Cobal was saying would be more rote, they would be able to do and think, I really would like to see more than just discussion. I've been in some districts to where things were actually done. And discussing about what's happening and actually doing it are two different things. You can discuss all you want, but in a car crash, are you actually going to slam the brakes? Are you actually going to not tense up? Like, those are things that I really think that we need to think about. And as a community, we really need to think about that, especially unfortunately in this day and age and with the climate that our school is in, I think that we, like, these are important things. I really hope that the district would put that information out about the book or the books. And it's fabulous that it's going to all the elementary school kids, but I really think that it should come out, especially for special education and emotional support kids as well, because honestly, those are the kids that are going to freeze. Those are the kids that we're going to end up losing a lot of because they don't understand or comprehend. So I would just like you to please think about that, please.
Thank you, Lisa. Now go to old business. Any old business? Not Director Urban, Budget and Finance?
Under Section 8.1, approve the IU 13 IDEA Part B allocation and use of funds agreement with Northern Lebanon School District for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second, discussion? These are consensus items. So all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
And then in Section 8.2, there will be a, and this is very important for the public that's interested in our budgeting, December 11th, Mrs. Martin, our business manager, will be having a budget workshop and be discussing with you last year's budget and this year's budget. And the only thing I can tell the audience is that the draft just came in from the Auditor of Finances for last year's budget, the 2718 budget. And what our numbers were saying to you guys, those numbers are actually better than expected. So the numbers that we were thinking, we had the actual numbers better than that, and she'll be reviewing that with everyone on December 11th. So very beneficial budget meeting, budget workshop that night for anyone that wants to know what the budget looks like and wants to be able to speak intelligently about the budget and where we're at fiscally.
Where and what time?
At 6:00 in this library. And that's all I had, President.
Thank you, Director Urban. Thank you for bearing with us, for putting up with your voice and having to struggle through. We appreciate the gentrification. Director Self?
For buildings and grounds, we have three consent items. 9.1, building use request, 9.2, disposition of items, and then the last one.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? That faces to curriculum, Director Denny.
I move item 10.1, which is to approve the tentative adoption of the new textbook, sign naturally. The United's 1 through 6, of course, is American Sign Language 1. I think this is a consent document.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
And I move item 10.2, which is to approve the final adoption of the following new courses, American Sign Language 7 and 8 and American Sign Language, and this is a discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
I think the last time when we had our committee meeting was a question about whether or not colleges would view American Sign Language as an actual language, and we got an email back from that question saying that yes, they do. And so that's great work.
Yeah, as a result of that committee, we did investigate it. As a matter of fact, Mrs. Haas got some information together for us, working with some of the other staff. And it is accepted nationally and state by state, but it does vary. So something I think that will go into the final planner, once we have the planner put together and goes for final approval, we might put qualifier in there under that description of that particular curriculum or that class, saying, "Please check with your colleges actually." Although it appears it's pretty widely accepted as a part of language credit. Just whenever our parents make sure they check it out, so.
Any other discussion? Call the booth. Yes.
Sackelik? Murray?
Yes.
Elon?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor, motion pass?
Anything else, Director? Go to Director Klein for extracurricular committee.
I have three consent items. First one is approve Mrs. Zamba's request for a New York City field trip. The second item is the spring musical, approving the high school musical. And the third item is approving the list of coaches.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes?
Do have a one-information item. We have a youth badminton club that Mrs. Smith is taking up to be the advisor, and students are going to meet on a regular basis to have matches and tournaments in available spaces. This is an Olympic sport, so. That's all I got.
So the musical folks, congratulations on moving forward with your musical.
Very excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Klein. Human Relations, Director Self?
Thank you. All the items are consent and includes 12.1 substitutes, 12.2 tenure, 12.3 resignation, 12.4 mentor mentee, 12.5 employment and recent designations, as well as 12.6 lead request. I make a motion to approve the consent items as listed. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Thank you, Director Self. Quite busy, the Super Kennels Report.
Not quite a Super Kennels Report, but just a quick follow-up to one of the items from the HR committee they just approved. Just as information to the community and to the board members with regard to Dr. Winger's lead that the administration, Secretary Administration, myself, are actively putting together a plan to cover Dr. Winger's responsibilities with regard to student and staff support. As soon as we have something together, we'll probably be bringing that to the board and hopefully have a formal decision in December. In the meantime, my office is at the high school, and Dr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Haasor and Mr. Reese and Mr. Dolich over to find me, so there's been a handful of times where I've been called in to help out student situation, so that is readily in place, and we'll keep your posts from there.
Thank you. Representative reports. Director Klein, Career and Technology.
Yeah, I have one thing to report with the CTC. Recently, they are also making, taking steps to hire a security resource officer, much like our other Lebanon counterparts. It's just a necessary step that they think is heading in the right direction for security. It's the only new thing I have to report for CTC.
Thank you. Interview Unit 13, Director Murray?
I don't have to report this month, but I'll be there tomorrow night, so if anybody wants a long drive to Lakeview, I'd love the company.
Thank you for the commitment. Director Sackelik, Legislative and PSBA VAs on?
I got to attend the conference, and I really wish more members could attend at least one day. I think it is incredibly beneficial. I also think we should send someone to our business office next year. The majority of the displays and the vendors were actually geared towards financial civilian districts. I know similar to the architect that we had come in, they had architects who also offered energy-efficient alternatives, some of which ensured that if we needed to replace the HVAC systems in different areas that we obviously need to, they would ensure that if in two years we didn't see the cost go down in maintenance and the bills, that they would actually cover the majority of the cost. Fortunately, I don't know as much about any of those areas financially, so I do think if it was for one day, because it is a three, four-day option, send one person for each event. And I also think that the speakers are incredibly eye-opening to what our positions are as school board members. I think that it's a role that's defined by the community in one way, the teachers in another way, admin to what our role is, fellow board members to what our role is. And I think being able to sit down with PSBA members and speakers and other board members from across the entire state, it's enlightening, I guess is the best way to say that, that we on our worst day are every child's best hope. That we are the ones that parents come to when they try everything else that they possibly can. And I think that that's something that's hard for us to keep in mind. I also think as far as technology, it was amazing to listen to the way some of these people talk. I mean, these are the same people that were probably pushing districts to become one-to-one are now backing up and saying, "Hey, wait a minute, schools are forgetting the one, which is the kid in the one-to-one." That we're always, you know, trying to stay as fast as we can with the ever-changing technology, but we often forget that every student in this district still needs the same basic necessities that every one of us needed when we went to school, which is a teacher to champion them, an administrator to listen to them, a friend to sit beside them, a support system beneath them, and none of that comes from the technology. And I think that that's just something that we all need to hear and the kids need to hear. So, yeah, it was incredibly enlightening. So I do encourage anyone and everyone that can go, even those coming off of the board, to go and take that opportunity. And as far as legislative, WUP did sign the Keystone Free Bill, which is putting in place measures that will diminish the importance of standardized testing for graduation, which I think everybody has wanted. I'm sure we'll get more details in regards to that as it goes. I will send a lot of links and anybody else that would like the links to any of the conference events that I attended and discussions, and I'll send Leanne some of the wonderful information I grabbed that I know nothing about. Oh, and just so everybody knows, if you file a Right to Know request and you get my name in there, it's kind of a new fun job, which is removing staples and paper clips and helping sort through the massive amounts of Right to Know requests. So if you see an email from me asking a specific question to your request, I am not the Right to Know officer. I do not want to be the Right to Know officer. I am just helping with the massive amount of Right to Know requests, so that's why you see me around. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Self. Okay, our next. Okay, we have public input, and we'll start off with where we left off, back with Lisa McCoy. This is for non-agenda items.
Again, I'm Lisa McCoy, I still live at 445 South Lancaster Street.
Again, I'm Lisa McCoy, I still live at 145 Second Avenue Street. I wanted to start by quoting the shared values. Focus on moral absolutes, right off our webpage. We believe there are moral absolutes by establishing and administering a code of ethics that consists of sharing community values. We believe we are helping families instill a lifetime of moral compass into each student. Importance of the noble role models, also quoted directly from our website. We believe students need to see positive role models and therefore we would strive to be role models to youth around us. We believe that our classes should highlight the people in our history and contemporary lives who exemplify these traits. We also believe it is appropriate to counter the culture which often glorifies those that are not good role models. When is it okay for adults who are supposed to be role models, for our students, to tell parents the reason that their student is having a difficulty or having an issue in school is because of the company they keep? Let's be very clear, when a student comes to the office for help, instead of helping them, they receive punishment. In the same week that this particular student, she was attacked by the same aggressors and doesn't even, it doesn't even defend themselves while being mercifully beaten on. And again, that student is being blamed instead of her aggressors. So if a student were raped in a bathroom at INO, would we then blame the student because their skirt was too short or that the student was asking for it? This is called victim blaming. And you should be ashamed as women and people of the community and board members and of the school for perpetuating such a dangerous philosophy.
Next speaker will be Cameron McCoy. On safety.
Hi, I'm Cameron. My mom is just up, so you already know my address. First, I feel like safety should be everybody's number one priority because it keeps you safe, keeps you alive. But I have some ideas, like if I would, like, in a school as like a principal or assistant or something, is like once or twice a month, chicken in every class to make sure that everyone's okay, ask how they're feeling, if they have any issues, talk about it, if they don't want to, and write it down. Like some people talk about it, but some people write it down because you don't want to push them to talk about it if they don't want to. I would also walk around the halls like the principals do today, like they walk around the halls, make sure everything's okay, which I'm happy they do because then they see something's wrong, they figure it out, they fix it, which makes me feel safe. I would also check in on the lunchrooms, monitor the lunchrooms, make sure there's no fights or anything that happened, so everybody would get along. So I know when people, when that's happened, you get detention or you get ISS. I feel like we should have like alternate decisions for like the weekends. Like say there was a fight, they should do community school service or just community service, so it's not just them sitting in a room and being like, oh, I'm not, didn't do anything bad, I'm just sitting here, this is all I, this is all I gotta do. I still have plans, I can still do my plans, doesn't matter. We should also have like the students that fought or have an argument work together because then they can solve their problems working as a team instead of just sitting and still like fighting against each other and not making it any better. I also feel like some students, we should make like a wall or a card of like to build students up, so we don't like bring them down and make everybody happy, make everybody try and be like friends together. And if we do that, then I feel like we wouldn't have as much fights as we do because the past week and this week, there's been a lot of fights. And I actually got pulled from school early because my mom felt like I wasn't safe. I felt like I wasn't safe. I felt like there was, you know, as soon as I turned a corner, there's gonna be a fight, somebody's gonna get hit, somebody was gonna scream stuff, people are gonna go at each other. And for a student, if you don't feel safe in your own school, then you don't want to go to school. And for those people that don't want to go to school, then they don't learn and then they feel like that they're never gonna get to college, never gonna be able to do their dream job. So I feel like we should try and fix that as much as possible.
Andrew Murphy, budget, and anything else?
Andrew Murphy, eighteen twenty-eight Glassbridge Road, Anvil, PA, one seven zero three. I wanna say Cameron, you did a great speaking job, straight from the heart and great talk. Well, I'll talk about the budget, looking at last year's, this year's budget versus last year, looking at some of the increases that we've done. We increased the budget 1.1 million more than last year. We also are predicted to end the year 1.1 million short than last year. Their increases were 1.2 million in regular programming, half a million in special instruction, 237,000 in pupil personnel, maintenance was 176,000 increase, transportation, quarter of a million increase. If you, I can only look at the budgets year over year because I don't have the actuals yet from what was, what they actually spent. The majority of costs are in staffing. You approved a teacher's contract we can't afford. So to balance the budget, who are we getting rid of? You know, the state police, they visit here, so not, you gotta make cuts somewhere, so we're gonna get rid of the school resource officer. The principals for the high school seems to be going back and forth to the high school and the middle school doing all the disciplinarian, disciplinarian. So is the dean of students, whose job is to be a disciplinarian, not really doing what that job is? Do we need a dean of students? So, I mean, just stuff to consider, I don't know who, where the budget line's gonna be, but I don't want you guys coming asking for more taxes without seeing serious cuts because you guys are taking in more money each year, but you're putting your budget where you're spending more than you're bringing in. You can't maintain that. Lian said in three years, we're gonna have negative a million. We gotta address it. Stop it before it gets too late.
Next one, PA statutes and attendance. Carol Walters.
Hello, School Board, I'm Carol Walters Carroll. I live at 141 Huckleberry in Jonestown, Pennsylvania. I just wanna cover this evening, I guess I should say restakes, I'm sure you are familiar with this at some level. There's a 1945 Act 14, Section 1080. It discusses the removal of a superintendent from office and have their contract terminated after a hearing by the majority vote board of school board directors of the district for negligence of duty, incompetency, and terminus or immorality. Why am I stating this? Well, that October 4th article in the Lebanon Valley News, where a superintendent stated that he blamed the school board for making him ineffective. All right, use the word ineffective, ineffective incompetence, potato, patato. This also leads to, I saw a copy of the contract of his termination, the agreement. And the thing is, is he's applying for education positions, obviously, that's his background. But the Department of Education requires a good moral character review whenever you apply for one of these jobs. So this is under 24 Pennsylvania statute subsection 1209. It's also mentioned in 22 PA Code, Section 4912. Now, I won't bore you with all the questionnaires, but it's just a simple yes or no that you should answer a yes to. So if you have to answer no to any of these, you have to explain yourself. So one of the questions, for example, is, have you ever resigned from or otherwise left employment and gotten a settlement or an agreement while the allegations of misconduct were pending or under investigation? So, well, I'll tell you what, you know, if there's any student teachers in the district who are looking at trying to get a teaching job, those 21-year-old graduating from college will tell you, if I check yes to any of those questions on that good moral character, you're gonna be passed over. So we're gonna let a superintendent go with his full salary and he's only applying for jobs within the education and he has to fill out this good moral character review. And, you know, there's more lawsuits coming, folks, I'm sorry to break it to you. But here's the bottom line, so the school board, you're his boss and if you let, if you let your employee go and you don't hold him responsible on any level, it's gonna fall on you because you've allowed it to happen. So in a sense, you might wanna actually protect yourself and as a taxpayer, I really, I don't think with all the budget cuts and Mr. Murphy just talked about, with the budget problems that Mr. Murphy talked about, I really don't think that we can afford to pay for admitted incompetence. That's what I think. Just one more thing, I do have attendance also stated that I wanna speak of. So really the attendance situation, the attendance problem, my son was noted as absent. We contacted his teachers, his teachers said, no, he was there. So my husband went down to address the issue in the morning and he was told, now nobody actually picked up the phone and called CTC and said, hey, is this kid here that day? They told my husband to go drive down there and work it out himself. Here's the problem with that. So in government, an unauthorized commitment, generically speaking, I'm not speaking from legal right now, generically speaking, an unauthorized commitment is when a person who's in a appropriate authority to make a better decision incurs a cost on a business that could have been avoided. So she took my lead mechanic and vice president of my corporation.
Sorry to interrupt you, that was four minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final agenda, a non-agenda item this evening is Bill Carroll, office duties.
Hey, I'm Bill Carroll, 141 Huckleberry Road, Jonestown, PA. And yes, I will be running for school board here coming up. Anyways, to move along here where my wife had left off, I'll pick up on it. My son, as everybody knows, is known as Big Red. He's 305 pounds, he's got red hair and glasses, kinda hard to miss unless you're blind or maybe on drugs, maybe we should do some drug testing too while we're at it. Anyways, so we need to save some money of the school budget, we're looking to cut costs anywhere we can, the attendance lady gotta go because she's worthless. Anyways, so I went in that day, my kid had this attendance paper that said that he was not in school. I was, of course, ripping on him all day because we don't believe in that where I come from. So I said, your story better match theirs, you got some explaining to do. We get in there, he's like, no dad, I was there, I was there, I was there. We get in there, saw a couple of his teachers going in and said, yeah, yeah, he was here, what are you saying? So I'm standing there and I'm waiting as this woman's giving me the deer in the headlights look, if we've all seen when you know they're full of crap. And I'm sitting there, okay, you're gonna pick up your phone any minute and make that call, you're gonna check on this. Nothing. So like always, I had to take care of it myself and I went and did it. So now what my wife's saying, there's a whole hour that's missed there, we'll never get that back. We paid that lady that hour's salary. So I don't see that. And the funny thing is, this is the first time we've had issues with her. Mrs. Murphy, last year she went through this whole thing with her boy Kyle, where again, he missed out on some stuff because of that same individual. So this is a repetitive thing. Does it fall on her shoulders? Yes. Who else is it falling? The person that lets it go. Moving right along, round two in our office debate here, the gentleman here with the security force for the school with his Atlas training, that was great by the way. Something we really need to push on this is to also train our people to know when they have a repeat sexual predator offender such as David Hamilton. You can look this up, two months ago, there was a big massive manhunt for this gentleman, Bucks County, PA. What did we do? Jonestown Elementary. We left him inside the school, not once, not twice, but three times as far as I know. He come in and have dinner with this kid. Guy had paperwork. Do we wanna have another Columbine? Apparently so. It ain't gonna happen on my watch. I found about this and I was kinda wound up, I'm sure you folks are too. But you guys can research this, this guy was actually, they had a manhunt for him because he raped one of his own kids. And then we said, after the school had paperwork on this guy, they opened up the door, come on in, left him come right in and sit with, sit with this kid in school. That's terrible. So anyways, hope you guys can do something.
Thank you for your. That concludes the public input portion. New business.
I wanted to bring up the open bid or looking for offers for solicitor. If this is something you want to discuss about sending out the requests, I think a lot of law offices need to get the requests to submit the bids. Is that something that we wanna discuss tonight?
Have those been sent out or have we decided?
It's been advertised in the Lebanon News, Patriot News, online, and it's on our website, social media. I was contacted by board members to send it out to one law firm, which I did, and then we had one law firm inquire about it and request the R and P. They're not due back yet, so I haven't gotten any of those back yet. If you'd like me to reach out to law firms, I can highly do that, I can get the names of law firms that other school districts in the area use, if there's those same law firms that you'd like. If you'd like to see some of the law firms to reach out to. If their layout is okay with that, can you please give more?
Do you do any specific or just?
No, like she said, just looking at other school districts, I know in the area, someone who share from.
So just, you want me to speak out to Lebanon County school districts?
Yeah.
And anyone that they have that signs those?
Sure. Not really new business, I just wanna take a moment and say that the artwork in here is absolutely amazing. I wanna shout out to the art department. I wasn't able to attend the veterans breakfast just because, you know, deployment doesn't really allot early mornings for us, but my husband is stateside, so seeing all of this after a year one deployment is awesome and it's beautiful and I hope to take some time at the end and go through it, so shout out to the art department.
Couple other quick items, one is, does anyone have any other?
You probably are gonna talk about this, but nominations for president and vice president.
I just wanted to alert the board members that now is the time to call Director Murphy.
Murray.
Murray. Sorry, just read his name. Just let her know if you have a nomination for president or vice president. We're looking for candidates obviously to fill those positions that have a desire and a vision. And saying that, most of you, if not all of you knew last year when I went up for one more year as president, that that's. more year as president, that this was going to be my last year as president. I've truly been honored and humbled by the help and the support that I've gotten from the board as president. We've gone through some good times, we've gone through some rocky roads, but in the end, I look back on the district and somebody we just talked to this afternoon about the state of the district and the stuff that's being put into place right now, I really feel very, very confident that we are in a really good place. Yes, we're gonna have some financial issues that we need to work through. We've done it before and I have confidence that the board will do it again. But the actual leadership and direction, I feel very, very comfortable with that we're gonna be going in the right direction fairly soon. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that this was my decision last year, it was not something that, I don't want the news and the social media going swirling around, this was not something that was just decided last month saying, this is it, I've thrown my hat in, I'm not doing it anymore. This is something that I feel my part, my station in life right now, I need to pull back a little bit. They're a lot younger, more energetic and forward-thinking, I don't know, forward-thinking, I don't want to give myself that credit, but certainly that they have a passion for the direction that they see their, the school district going in. I have grandchildren still in the district, but having kids in the district certainly has a totally different spin and I think that will bode well for the new administration that will be electing next month. So, with that, we'll go on to, I think it's a gentleman? I'd like to. Just a quick note from my table of vice presidents. Next month, where is the exact date there? Yes, December 4th will be our meeting. It is a reorganization meeting, so instead of being at the regular time, it will actually be at 5:30 and that's when we'll actually be doing the voting for the president, vice president, and seating the new board and their different committees. And then 6:30 and 7:15 will be the committee meetings like we did this month. So, this is the last time I'll wail this gavel. We are adjourned. Thank you.